My emails, but other than that, is everybody comfortable?
Yep.
So Steve, just one addition, we have Haley on the line standing by and she has access to the public discussion or public comment email box. So at the appropriate time, just ask for her. And then for if there's any public comment and then you know, for each discussion item, what we're recommending is take public comment right before you discuss the agenda item. And Haley will let you know if there's any public comment for each individual item.
Okay, sounds good. So seeing that we have a quorum, I guess I'll call the meeting to order. And I don't necessarily have a chair report for anything that won't be on the discussion menu anyway. So that takes us into Kitty and the FFRP report.
Okay, so first of all, I just want to commend Carlos and his crew. They've been absolutely fabulous during this emergency. As you know, many of the open spaces and recreational areas in our area and across the country have had to close down because of poor public behavior, but Carlos has been very proactive and we worked together to set up a one-way loop on the bluff trail and marine terrace. He, FFRP put out very subtle polite signs which were completely ignored. So Carlos went and got the giant one-way do not enter signs, extremely effective. And has maintained those signs, also widened the cross trails so that people can maintain social distancing. So unlike most of the public areas in our, in San Luis Obispo County, the ranch is still being able to be open and provide an outlet for people to get out of their houses and get a little exercise. We are having persistent difficulty with keeping dogs on leash signs up. They keep getting ripped down. But our volunteer Brian Morgan is out there putting in heroic work. I just can't praise Carlos enough though, for what he's done to keep this open. We don't have any public programs coming up, not to your surprise. We may or may not have a kitchen tour in July and we'll keep you posted. That's basically what I have to report.
Okay, thank you Kitty. Anybody got any questions for Kitty? None, seeing none. Okay, we'll move on. There you go. This makes it quick, huh? All right, so now we're into the public comment session. Does Haley have any public comments for us?
Hi Steve, I do not have any public comment.
Okay, Dawn, do you have anything you want to chime in with? Since we know you're here. All right.
I'm on mute. Yeah, no, I have nothing to comment on. Thank you.
Right on. Hey, if we, here's something for us here. If we're gonna be doing these over the next, well, hopefully not months, but even weeks, we should really encourage the public to try to attend. I know it seems kind of daunting for them to jump on, but once you get familiar with the Zoom thing, it's kind of fun and easy to actually attend the meeting without being there. So it's an interesting little. There's Mr. Carlos. Welcome to the meeting, Carlos. You missed the praises from Kitty that said that you're doing a fabulous job on the ranch, keeping it open. And I would have to concur with that. I've noticed the cutting of the trails, even the obscure trails have been widened, at least weed-wise, to allow for the passing. So I want to commend you on your efforts. Thank you, buddy. Cheers. Anybody else want to praise Carlos right now? All right, seeing none. And we're not nearly as far. Oh, go ahead Stan.
Um, yeah, the, the, the trails are really nice. I have a question. It has to do with, I guess, the dog park. And I don't know whether Carlos, you're part of that or, or what, but about six or eight months ago, I bought four rather large bottles of hand cleaner. And I mounted one on that little, little covered sitting area that's there. And I put the other three into the wood bench and we'd gone through three of them, or almost gone through three of them. And I looked in the, I looked in the box and somebody had taken the other 32 ounce bottle of that stuff. And can we, how would we go about even getting any of that stuff so that people that do come down to the dog park? Cause there's a lot of contact with those balls and stuff like that would be a safe place. Just a question.
Question to Carlos, more or less.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, we've been keeping a close eye on the dog park, obviously for, for those reasons. As you've probably seen out there, the chairs and benches have been spread apart throughout the park. There are concerns, obviously, with people walking in through the same door, touching the same handle, utilizing the same racket. So my suggestion is everybody bring their own rackets, bring their own balls so that there's no cross contamination there. As far as the hand sanitizer, we discussed, we were between ourselves, just the GM and, and myself, who were talking about, you know, how we could possibly put hand sanitizer or wipes there. And, you know, we basically came to the same conclusion that you did is if we put them up there, somebody's gonna take them. So the short answer to your question is, I don't have an answer to that.
Me either. I tried to get some more, but thanks Carlos.
Okay, anybody else? All right, seeing none, no acknowledgements. That takes us into Carlos's report. What do you got, Carlos?
I think two hands are up Steve for.
Oh. Perfect, let's go back. I missed that. Who wants something for Carlos?
Let's see, mute. Well, I can't tell. Am I on?
Yeah, you're on.
Oh, okay. I was just gonna say, no, I think the, the trails is, is actually worked out really well on the, on the, on the weed cutting. I agree with you Steve, what you, you say that. It keeps people going. They, they stay to their far side and boy, I'll tell you, Kitty and Carlos, you've done a great job on that trail system. And, and I know people really find it a blessing to be here in Cambria because of that alone. So keep up the good work. That's really all I had.
Perfect, I concur. Anybody else?
Yeah, Steve, you skipped over public comment. You're not, I wanted to bring something up that maybe we can discuss. It's not on the agenda, but the piney way closure, this might be an opportunity for us to talk about it. We can't make a decision. But do you want to carry that on the conversation or not?
Yeah, I do. Let's do it under future agenda items.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Anybody else? Perfect, all right. Carlos, facilities and resources.
Yeah, so obviously, things have changed dramatically since the last time we met. You know, there's all sorts of stuff going around. And we've had to do a lot of changes in the department. So I'll talk about a couple of the things that happened. So as far as the vets hall, we had to cancel all the events at the vets hall for March and April. We're looking at May and June as well as possible cancellations for events as well. Right now, we only have, I believe, one event booked in May, so that wouldn't be that difficult to be able to cancel. I think a lot of people are already noticing that they need to cancel events, so they're on their own, calling the CSD and just canceling those events as, as they're going along. I'll share with you sort of the same update that I shared with the board yesterday as far as what, what we've been doing out on the ranch. And so as Kitty explained, one of our main concerns was the Fiskelini Ranch and how many people were out there using the ranch. And our first task was to get the bluff trail safer for people to use. And so we ended up working on a plan to be able to make that bluff trail a one-way loop from the bottom bluff trail and going on towards the top marine terrace trail and doing a loop there. We ended up installing signs as well on the trail heads and on the entrances, trail heads and on every intersecting trail with large signs to be able to tell people what we wanted them to do. And as you were mentioning, we also ended up mowing the grass trails to widen those up about 10 feet. They're usually about two to three feet in width. So we ended up doing that throughout the entire ranch. And we focused as well on the forest trails and we utilized a lot of hand weed whackers and smaller machinery to be able to, to accommodate that. And as Kitty was mentioning, our efforts have really paid off. We've noticed that people are getting used to that one-way loop on the bluff trail. And, you know, they're keeping safe distances on, on all the other trails. So, so far, so good. You know, people are doing what they're supposed to be doing. The other area that we ended up doing some work on was the public restrooms. And due to exposure and concern to the employees, we ended up closing the public restrooms on Sheffield and Center Street. And we installed handicap and a regular porta potty along with a hand washing station and a trash, trash can in every location there. We ended up doing some work for the homeless as well. So there's a number of homeless that are living on the corner of Highway one and Cambria Drive. Somewhere in the eight to 12 encampments are on the Caltrans right away. So in order to assist these folks there, I asked Harvey's Honeymoon Huts to drop a porta potty and a hand washing station. And we also ended up moving a trash can dumpster from the vets hall that was unused and moved it over to the area that you see on the map. That's on Fiskelini Ranch. And so we've got that service for the homeless people there on, on that area. We also had a bunch of trees that were on Victoria Way that were dead and needed to come down. And we were, I was able to get one of the local contractors to help us take those trees down before the rains came this weekend. We also had several trees on Warren Drive behind, behind Warren and the ranch property that were dead and a hazard to the public as well. And we ended up taking those down as well with the help of a contractor. That's my report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Carlos?
I do, I do.
Stan?
When you come when you come south on the bluff trail from down by the beach, you come to a point when after you go over that first little bridge where the, the, the trail going south along the bluff is, there are, there are kind of bushes that are growing in on it. And when I walk my dog, it's, you know, my dog and my, my, my golden retriever and myself can just fit through there. And everybody does kind of hold back and, you know, stand aside and all that kind of stuff to make the six feet. But is it possible to trim those back a little bit?
Yeah, so somebody else says we were working down on that south end. We were mowing the side there, as you probably noticed, to be able to allow people to step off if, if they needed to. And somebody mentioned the same thing that you mentioned about the, the bushes there. And I took a look at it. Obviously, they, every year we go in there and try to, you know, cut back the vegetation. The short answer to your question is we'll look into it and we'll make sure that that gets cut. You know, the one thing that we're noticing, it's, it's sort of hard to be able to do that right now because of so much traffic that's going through the bluff trail. And for us to close down that trail for two, three hours, it's gonna be daunting for us to stop people from, from walking through.
Okay. Thanks.
But we'll do what we can.
Any other questions for Carlos? Okay, seeing none. How about a motion to accept the minutes from the March meeting? Joyce raising.
I saw move.
Kermit moves. Do I get a second? Stan seconds it. All in favor? Hit the right button. Is that true? Say aye. Aye. All right, it carries. All right, so now we're into the discussion of the skate park. Does anybody have anything novel to say about that right now?
Steve, I think Kermit has a question from the previous.
Oh, go ahead Kermit. I can't hear him. Is that true?
Okay. It was just me trying to ask a question about five minutes ago. I was chasing it. The I guess the only thing I had was when Carlos reported about that one area for the homeless. I think it's a good stroke. It's one of these things where it's, it's a double sword.
Yeah.
It's about the permanency of the whole thing, but I don't know what else you, you could do. I think it's, it's a reasonable thing. It's just one of those things we have to watch. Major, or the bigger cities are allowing parking lots, open areas, you know, corded those off. But they're gonna end up somewhere. And I think the accommodation is probably reasonable, but it's, it's, and it's an unused area by the public mostly. So I guess it's one of those things we just should watch because I have a feeling that it may be a solution, it, it may be a problem. That's all I have to say about it. And the previous thing I had my hand up was Jim Ballinger, when he asked about the piney way, cause I forgot about it, was I will be probably walking that whole trail all this time and, and I, I will sooner or later run into the guy who put the stuff up there, who will accuse me of vandalizing his gate, which has been vandalized in some way. But it's, since it's just me walking the streets out there, I don't want to make a major discussion of the issue. But I'm going to tell him I'm gonna walk that way and he can call the, the cops and he, or he can call the sheriff anytime he wants, but for a trespass order. Now, that's my personal thing which I'll do, but obviously, I'm not gonna knock at any doors in this time and age to talk to the property owner at the bottom of the hill nor the guy at the other side on the lower piece of property. But I guess my point is, I don't, I won't volunteer myself as a commissioner at this time or anything, but it's one of those things we, we are gonna, I'm gonna have to talk to the guy. And a lot of this stuff will come up. That's all I had.
Okay, and Morgan, we're gonna discuss that further in the future agenda item here too, because I, we've all got a, a piece in that. So let's hold on to that for a minute.
I'm just, I'm just, just pointing it out.
Gotcha, I agree. And I do appreciate your comments. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments on that aspect of the homeless situation over there because yeah, I feel the exact same way you do. I'm glad it's there, but we may be opening a Pandora's box, but no pun intended there. Okay, let's move on to the rate to that skate park issue.
Steve, sorry to interrupt again. Carlos just got his hand up.
Carlos, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, piggyback on the conversation about the homeless. And obviously, you know, it's one of those double-edged swords when you provide services for the homeless. It just encourages more to show up there. And I reached out to the commander just advised him of what we were doing there so that he could keep an eye on the area and at least have a little more patrol. And again, it's one of those things that, you know, they're on Caltrans right away. They're next to the creek. You know, they're in the, in the forest there. So by us providing services there, are we encouraging them to stay there? Are we saying it's okay for them to be there? I think in these times that we're living in, you know, that's sort of something that I'm putting off to the side. The main thing is, you know, how can we help these people at this point? And that's why we ended up providing that porta potty and that trash room is there.
Yeah, nice work Carlos. Joyce?
Joyce, you're, you need to unmute. Your microphone's blocked.
We didn't hear you Joyce.
Okay, I, I think with the situation for hygiene with the creek right there, it's a wise thing to do, a very wise thing.
Yeah. We're better off keeping them below the well site than above the well site. All right, anybody else? All right, now to the skate park. John, do you have anything for us on that? Carlos?
Uh, yeah, I sort of have something.
Steve, before we proceed, would you want to ask for public comment, in case there is any from Haley?
All right. Hey, oh, I gotcha. Haley, do you have any comments on, on that particular item, I guess is what we're asking?
I do not have any public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, thank you John. All right, Carlos, what do you got?
Yeah, so at the last pros meeting, we discussed the skate park and recommendation at that point was to look at urban soccer and just get an idea of what the multi-use court, five-on-five soccer would look like. I did reach out to them and they were able to provide me with some information about, about that. Let me share that with you here in a second. So as we had left it off, they have provided us with this estimate of good, better, best as far as the, the court system there. And what they ended up providing for us is a sort of a live view of what the courts would look like. So here is a top view of the five-on-five footsall soccer court. As you can see, this design is based on the best price range that they gave us. It includes, as you can see there, a paved parking area right next to the park with a couple of handicap parking spots. And obviously, the, the paved area would serve not only the park, but also the library and any events that are happening at the vets hall as well. This court includes a synthetic turf ground for soccer. This is a front view of what the court would look like. And you can see on this that it includes two bleachers. There's also advertising skirt at the bottom that can be used to fundraise or, or for maintenance of the, the park as well. This is a side view of what the court would look like. Obviously, as I mentioned, they included all of the amenities, which is even lights at every corner of the, the park. You also have a side gate entrance there. And you also have a goal that's on the sides on each side that is made of, of metal for longevity and little maintenance there. So I also reached out to them and asked them to provide us with an alternative to make the court multi-use. And so you've noticed this is a second option. Nothing's changed as far as the size, the dimensions. What you see as far as the change is the blue color, which is basically a different flooring that allows for a second sport to be played there, in particular basketball. And so you see the front view of that where you can play soccer. And you can also play basketball as well. And you can see how that aspect comes about where they have added a basketball hoop on the top of the goal baskets there to be able to allow for that second sport to happen. So that's basically my, my report on that. Obviously, we've changed dramatically in the last month or so. You know, talking about, you know, the financial aspect of the district and, and the financial outlook of the community and, you know, we don't know where we stand as far as the skate park or the soccer. Based on that, it's too early to tell what funding is gonna be available, but I just wanted to share that, that information with you.
All right, thank you Carlos. Anybody want to comment on that? Stan?
On Cambria Open Forum, there was a dad, I don't know, some other people that were complaining about how we're abandoning the skateboard kids. And it didn't seem like he had a mass of people that were supporting him in terms of, you know, marching on the CCSD and demanding action from Dawn and stuff like that. But have you heard, have you heard from that group of people that wanted to remain skate park? And what their, what their view is?
I have heard a little bit. Has anybody else heard anything other than the last situation at the meeting in February? I guess that was the February, or was it the March board meeting where the skateboard guys kind of spoke up at the meeting? Do we want to go over that again? Does anybody have a comment? Well, go ahead Kermit.
I, I, the only questions I have is, we sort of had three competing projects competing for $200,000 or so. The toilet, the skate park and the, the proposal for the, frankly, even if, I'd say Carlos generated for us. And I think we all, I think the multipurpose court is certainly is, is good a project as the, for the public as the skate park, if not more so. The, and it's easier implemented by far and cheaper. So, but anyway, we have three projects of dubious public acclaim. And I think it's sufficient that we probably, we should prioritize them somehow based on what we perceive or what the public perceives as, as a reasonable thing. And maybe this is one of those things we would include a public comment sheet in, in the CCSD mailer. Give a, you know, paragraph of choices and kind of sense the public, what they think about it. Because we really haven't done any formal sensing. Except with the exception of the swimming pool, which is not ours proposals. So, but I think it would be reasonable that we probably would, would possibly submit something for public consideration and feedback. That's easy to do and, and cost-free. They just, the, they could respond back either a website or, well, websites aren't like it. Probably just a mail-in or drop off the box or, or any kind of comment that they could drop off somewhere else. That's it. Three projects, all good. Some are better, one's better. And that's the one we ought to focus on first and put the money into, but some kind of public sensing.
Thank you Kermit. Joyce?
I agree. I think that's a, a very wise thing to do and send it out in the water bill.
Adolf?
You've got Jim and Carlos with hands up.
Yeah, I think I'm waiting for Adolf, aren't I?
Must be muted.
Manon now?
Yeah, you're there. Go ahead.
Not quite.
No. We lost you again Adolf. All right, I'm gonna go to Jim.
Okay, thanks Steve.
We'll come back Adolf.
I don't know if, if those basketball hoops that were in the, in the vets hall parking lot, or if they're still there. Carlos probably knows, but they were there for years and years and years. And I never saw anybody ever throw a basketball hoop. So to save money, if you just do the soccer thing, I think that's big now. And if you want to add something later on down the line, that would be. And if you want to add something later on down the line, that would be also good. And as far as a mailer, the number of people that are going to respond are the eight people that want skateboard parks and then another people that are going to respond, probably another 50 or 100 would say that soccer thing is good. So I know it's cost-effective to put something in the mailer. But during these times, I'd probably do it when there's a potential of money. And there's a potential of making the decision. I think that the off, you know, doing any meaningful construction on it is probably four months away at least. So that's just my thoughts.
All right, I'm gonna go to Adolf now.
Here we are. On the skate park where the two gentlemen were discussing things, my impression was is that they really wanted to do something. But they were also talking about basically volunteering labor and other things, I guess, to get it done. They were talking about going out and possibly raising whatever funds they needed to for materials, etc. That was my impression that, at least from the Facebook situation. And I don't know if they're still active or not.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. So I'll explain that. Carlos, did you want to comment on something?
I'll let you go first.
Yeah, okay. Am I there?
Yep.
My position, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that we're not, we just need to hold on right now with everything, right? We don't want to spend money. There's nothing there. So we're not doing anything this month. If we even talk about it again next month, we're just going to be talking about it. As far as rating things, this group, I'm pretty sure is the bathroom is most important, but for the short term, doing something at the skate park location makes them sense if money was available. My problem right now is even money that I've been floating around that's out there might be directed to COVID response more so than to the skate park. So we're going to have a funding issue for the next couple of years. My idea was, is if there was money, that's a good-looking cup, Jim. My point was if there was money available at some point, I'm going to allow that discussion to happen again. All right, so we've got $100,000. Are we ready for the soccer field or the skate park? And we're going to have a couple of meetings and let that kind of gyrate itself out, if that makes sense. I think that's a better thing than putting something into the CCSD mailer, which just touches a few people. And even though I do agree with the assessments that have been made here today, that I think the soccer thing is going to win 100 to 8, if that makes sense. And then the basketball thing was a nice look. If it doesn't cost much, that'll just add more people to that ability. So there you go. But nonetheless, I don't see us doing anything for at least 60 days. That's my comment. Anybody else? Well, that seems to be that. Joyce?
No, I'm fine. I've just.
John, are you comfortable with that?
I am. I think that's a sensible thing to do right now.
Yeah. All right. So that being said, let's move on from that. We're just sitting on our hands on that one. Let's talk of future agenda items. I want to talk about the piney. Oh, go ahead, Kermit.
Yeah, you know, I agree with what you said. We're not going to do anything for 60 days, no matter how fast we move or anything. But what about the public sensing? That was one of the comments in the paper. It just said, basically, we really haven't done our homework. One of the board members on the public sensing and for the, I agree with everything Jim said. You're going to get the balance thing, but at least you can say we did public sensing. And it wasn't convinced enough to override if you want to make any decision, but it might surprise us too. So why wouldn't we do a mailer as a cost-effective thing in the next water bill?
Anybody want to comment on that?
Well, you know, we
Joyce?
We sent out a mailer, actually, not directly from us, but sort of from us about the swimming pool. And then everybody in the world who was objecting to it said, we never heard about it. So I'm not sure the mailer does a lot of good. They probably throw it away and don't look at it. Because we actually sent something out and nine out of 10 people who are against it said, I never saw it. I don't know if a mailer is effective.
Well, at least they'll have seen it. You know, that's one thing. We most of what we talk about doesn't go very far. And even the board doesn't do much.
These people said they never saw it, even though they got it.
Well, I see. Yeah, that could be too. Yeah, that's it escapes your mind when you get a piece of paper and you look at it.
Yeah.
Me at the time. I don't disagree. But if it's free, hard to beat free sensing.
I still say we wait 60 days even before we send that out.
That's fine, too. I think it's, but it's something I think we should consider.
Okay.
We're pretty unjelled on everything.
Yeah.
So what will unjell us? Where are we headed with this? How would we break the tide of making a decision?
Oh, if there was a tie? You mean between public sentiment?
I think what you outlined was good. I was okay with the toilet being kind of a second priority. And the soccer field being a first priority. I'd even throw the basketball courts in because, hey, I don't play soccer and I don't play basketball, so might as well include both. But it doesn't make any I agree with your priority that you stated. When will we sort of push this a little closer to the edge on anything? Just wait two months and then let it become something?
Joyce?
I was just going to say that the bathroom is a priority before we can do anything else on the east ranch. But the soccer part isn't on the east ranch, and so we could consider it first, if, you know, if it came out that way.
Well, it competes. We are pushing, supporting a project for CCSD money, scarce money. So that pushes, we may only get one project a year.
If that.
Yeah, if that.
Okay, anybody else? Kitty?
It seems to me that money is, scarce money is going to become significantly more scarce for the next couple of years because of this. And inviting people to give an opinion will make them think that if there's an imminent decision, which is probably not the case. Unless something drastic changes. So it would set them up to say, I mean, to me, my experience is they would think you asked me what I wanted to do and now you're not doing it. So now I'm twice mad at you. So I would hold off. I would hold off for now.
Yeah, good point.
John stands.
John?
Yeah, I was just going to say on the fiscal issue, you know, most of the budget for for PROS comes out of the, well, I should say all of it comes out of the tax, property tax revenue. So and most of that comes out of mortgage withholdings. So I'm, you know, it remains to be seen it will have any impact on the budget there. Where the budget is more impacted is on the water, wastewater enterprise budgets. And we're actually through March, which really was the last two weeks, which was the stay-at-home shelter-in-place requirement. We're not seeing as big a an impact as we thought. It's even with all the restaurants largely closed and the hotels, which constitute about 40% of our typical use. The overall revenue or actually water production, I shouldn't say the, we don't know what the revenue is going to be yet until we bill. But the production, making the water that's used, is only down about 13%. So while that's still real money in the end, it's not as drastic as we thought. We don't know what the analysis is going to show yet until we bill. But, and we actually take the meter readings. But it could be that enough second home owners in the area move back to the area here to take shelter and are holed up in those second homes. We just don't know the data yet, though. So I just wanted to throw that in there, not to necessarily jump to conclusion that our budgets are going to be woefully impacted. It's, it may be a blip on the screen here. We just don't know yet.
Thank you. Good point. I don't have anything to do, so I've just been taking lots of showers. Maybe that's part of it. Adolf?
Yeah, I noticed that in just walking in our neighborhood that a lot of the vacation rentals or the absentee owners, etc., have come back periodically, usually on the weekends, interestingly enough. They stay for four or five days and go back home and then come back again.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see what the play on the community is with that. Hopefully, we'll all be safe.
Yep.
All right, anybody else before we move into the future agenda items? All right, seeing none, we're going to go to that piney way discussion. This is something we're going to want to put on the agenda in the future. Why do we want to put it on the agenda? Boom. Adolf, what do you got?
I'm sorry, I thought Kermit had.
Kermit, go ahead. You're muted, buddy.
If we don't object to the access now, it becomes locked in. We can, we have a good case for saying we probably have seven years of public use on that piece of property. And I really don't know what the amount of time is supposed to be. But I've been using it for seven years unrestricted. And this thing is currently popped up. I don't think the guy's got a good reason to put it there. But he has. And if we don't object to it now, when would we object to it? And so the question is, do we want that as a trail and a public access exit point? Because it locks the gate. That's one key down at the bottom that, you know, someone could break the chain on and or get through. But it's also another, that gate's a little more formidable. Nothing will pass through there. So the real question is, if we don't, we have never solved the public access issue on that right-of-way. We've never had anybody with any expertise examine it. There is two private parcels on this right-of-way down to the Fiskley Ranch that have access on that right-of-way. It is, where he has the gate, is a public right-of-way. Private land exists 200 feet down. That's another question that we, we have never seen the easements. We've never seen the property title dedication to an easement or access for those two properties down there. Really has to be looked at. It'll require some money from the title company to do the research. So I think we have to ask for money to push this. And the guy is not going to want to remove that gate without some kind of legal force telling him to do so. Just put about $2,000, excuse me, just put $2,000 or $3,000 into that gate. He's not going to want to take it down lightly.
Jim?
Yeah, Steve, you know, I'm not sure it's as urgent. It's certainly urgent for us to talk about. But we didn't do any pre-planning on when the parcels came up for bid at the county, you know, for a tax issue. Somebody just jumped on it and bought that. And we didn't, had we planned ahead of time and thought we could purchase those parcels at auction, it would have been smarter. But that's not the issue. Who approaches whom? I like Kermit's idea that he's not going to jump on the guy, but he would maybe be an independent person to talk to him. That's one thing. But who should really talk to? Whether we, first of all, we have to determine whether we need Piney Way. And just because we've been using it as a trail is one thing, but I think it's an emergency. It's an emergency exit that we should have.
Isn't it a fire issue? What about the fire department?
I like that idea, too. So who is, so the issue is, who should we go to? We could always get eminent domain for an easement in an emergency. And hopefully, we could buy that for a paltry sum. But we own the ranch, but we don't own that piney way or anything else. Maybe it's a county issue where the county says because they contributed toward this whole effort, they contributed $100,000 toward the east ranch to assure that there is an emergency exit. Maybe that's the person that makes the discussion. So I don't know. Who is the person that should officially ask the landowner what his intentions are? Because there are ways where I'm not going to say over his dead body, but we can come to an accommodation where everybody's happy with it. That's my thought. That's all I know. I don't know anything. I just, that's my direction or my idea.
Anybody else?
From the looking at all the photos that Kermit took, are there two gates or is there one down below and then one up above? Or is it a single gate?
There's two gates. One is meaningless because it does block his driveway off the public access. So that one was just to show you that the same style gate as the one above it, 200 feet above it. And so that's the owner of the gates, is the guy who has that one little piece of property. He doesn't live there. It's bizarre. There's no way he's going to put a house on it. He's recently had a permit issue with the county. And now, for some reason, he just doesn't want people walking past his gate. That's all I can summarize. Because the guy who was the real investment is the house. And I don't think, he obviously got permission from that guy to put the gate there. He wouldn't close that without it. And there's a guy at the bottom that is lord master of empty land. And he probably wouldn't, he wouldn't object to the gate there either. So the people with the two access probably did give him permission to do so. And the rest of us are just kind of trespassing on their land as well as the county access. But the guy that put it there, he doesn't have any right or claim or understand why he needed to put it there. And the county would not have approved. I'm sure it's not a permitted gate. Because when you drive a road, you have to be able to see the damn thing instead of getting down 300, 400 feet on a steep road and then having to back up. It's just an awkwardly paced thing. It should have been at the top or a reasonable junction of land thing. So it's just a bogus gate, some hard-headed bonehead put in. And, but it's enough to stop us our right-of-way because it says, private property, do not pass, do not trespass. So that, only one gate is of the issue. That's my thought.
John, what is, do you think you can get Bill to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I'm taking some notes here. And I think we probably need to do that work between the chief and the council.
Yeah.
So let me chime in a little bit on that conversation. So we've had the discussion about Piney Way in the past. And as you recall, the ranch property stops at a certain point. And then there's several lots that are not owned by the CSD. And then there's a street above Piney Way. The CSD has the sewer easement that goes from the ranch through that property and then up to Piney Way. That's the reason why we looked at that area as an emergency exit because we, as a CSD, have a sewer easement that allows us to maintain those sewer lines there. And it allows us access through that property. Couple of things that we'll look into as far as CSD. One is look at the sewer easement itself with the sewer department and our legal counsel to see what that sewer easement allows us to do. Whether it allows the public access through there or just the sewer department for maintenance issues. So we'll look at that. There's also the fire issue as far as the fire department and the emergency road there. So we'll have to look at those aspects as well. So we'll look at the fire, the sewer. We'll look through those issues with our legal counsel and we'll come back.
We'll look through those issues with our legal counsel, and we'll come back, hopefully, at the next pros meeting, give you an update on that. And again, it's probably also county as, as you've mentioned, you know, if that's a county maintained road and there was a gate installed by a, you know, private citizen there, that's also a county issue that we'll have to bring, bring to their attention.
Thank you. Stan?
Years ago, I was on the NCAC. Is this something to take to them so that they could get it to Bruce?
Not a bad point. Let's start with our guys in-house, and then we'll go to them next. I don't want to stir up a can of worms if we can deal with it simply.
I agree, Steve.
All right, anybody else? We're going to let the powers that be run the course on that this month, and we'll talk about it next month. We'll put it on the agenda for next month just in case there is some action we need to take. And I'm going to report, I'm going to report on this to the CCSD, too. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, you can put it in your, your report.
We're just having a discussion. We're not taking action. Yeah, okay.
Correct.
As a future agenda item, Steve, I would suggest and not go into the fire department and
Yeah, okay. Just that it's there and we're looking at it.
And we'll get a report from
Gotcha.
Next month.
Got it. All right, anybody else got anything? We're getting close to the one hour limit. That's my one hour limit, not Zoom. Right on. All right, people, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thanks for showing up. That seemed to work. Right on.
Thanks, Steve.
We'll be in touch. See you, guys.
Thank you, Steve.
You bet. Thank you, John.